Ball.
Forecast has been set. You may start.
Great. So, um, first, um, I want to thank everybody for coming, um, to the first, uh, audit committee meeting now. Um, this is the first PG CPS audit committee. I'm excited to be a part of this team. We're, um, standing up this committee from ground zero. So I asked everyone to please, um, have grace, um, with us as we get this thing going. But I think we will do a lot. I know we will do a lot of great work. Uh, the time is now, uh, six oh three P M. And I would like to call to order the June fourth, two thousand and twenty-four board audit committee meeting. Um, where everyone, my name is Brandon D. Jackson, Chair of the Committee District Six Representative, uh, the Board of Education. We will now have introductions of committee members, starting with the board members, administrative staff, board office staff, and all other guests. Tonight, this committee will listen to the overview of the internal audit and information coming from S Y two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call, please.
Mister Brandon Jackson.
Here.
Doctor Zippor Miller.
Here.
This is Shayla Adam Stafford.
Here.
Miss Pam Pamela Boozer Struthers.
Present.
Doctor Kenneth Harris.
Great. Thank you. We have three, we have four. So I wanted to pause them back up. I was reading the script, but make sure that everybody had the opportunity to introduce themselves. Um, I want to start with, um, the Vice Chair, um, and then, uh, Zippor Miller, Doctor Zippor Miller can start and pass it.
Good evening, everyone, and I echo our chair's sentiments, uh, board member Brandon Jackson. I am Doctor Zippor Miller and board member for District Five.
Uh, good evening, everyone. This is Pamela Boozer Struthers, Board Member for District Three.
Good evening. This is Shayla Adam Stafford. I'm the Chair of the OBAFA Committee, Operation Budget and Fiscal Affairs. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Judy McInnes Murray, Chair of the Board, ex-official member of this committee. Thank you. Staff.
Good evening. I am Michelle Winston. I am the Director of Internal Audit. Very excited to be here this evening.
Good evening. I'm Janice Walter Simple, the Internal Audit Supervisor. It's my pleasure to be here.
Evening, everyone. I'm Revell T. Fitzpatrick. Pronouns are he, him, he is. I'm the Director for the Prince George's County Board of Education. I just want to thank all our viewers for watching our, our first meeting. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Muriel Mia Barton. I am the Administrative Secretary for the Board Office.
I think that's everyone. Um, and as always, I just want to say thank you to the board staff for always helping us facilitate these meetings and getting us together with notes and, um, documents and making sure we're prepared, um, to execute at a high level. So I just want to say thank you, um, before we move forward. Um, so here is the one point three adoption of the June fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, uh, board audit committee meeting agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the June fourth board audit committee meeting agenda?
I move that we adopt the June tw- fourth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting agenda for the Audit Committee.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second to adopt the June fourth, two thousand and twenty-four board audit committee meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion passes. The agenda is adopted, adopted. Um, so what item one point four, we'll just start off with the, the mission. I think it's important to, um, understand as we set this meeting up, um, we developed a mission statement. Um, and this mission statement is, um, something that I think, uh, covers the scope of what our intention is for standing up this meeting, uh, for this committee, excuse me. Um, and it will evolve and grow, um, as we learn the complexities of Prince George's County, how we can be better, um, a better committee to assist, um, with the challenges that we may face, um, being such a big enterprise. So, um, I'll just read one point four. The, the primary purpose of the Prince George's County Public Schools Audit Committee is to provide oversight of the financial reporting process, the audit process, the PGC, PG CPS system of internal controls and compliance in a law with regulations. And also, um, with the mission, we also want to, um, underscore the objective as well, um, which is a little bit more lengthy, but I think, uh, we should definitely since our first meeting to read this aloud as well. Um, the committee, uh, objective is as follows. The Audit Committee members have a critical role in overseeing various aspects of Prince George's County Public School financial activities and performance. The Audit Committee has the responsibility for overseeing financial reporting and related internal controls, risk independent and internal auditors, and ethics and compliance. Also, the Audit Committee has the responsibility of following up on the recommendations and follow-up action items proposed by PG CPS internal audit and external auditors that the PG CPS administration agreed to comply with. The Audit Committee should understand risk areas and related internal controls. Attention can be focused on a few important areas to remain vigilant in overseeing this, including but not limited to any prior internal control issues and how they have been resolved, complex accounting and reporting areas, and how management addresses them, permanent audits by external or internal auditors, um, significant accounting policies, judgment, management, estimates, and their impact on the financial statements. So those were the mission, um, and objective statements. Um, so I'll move to two point O, um, for public comment. And I don't think we have any, me, is that correct? We don't have any, um, public speakers, um, for this evening. Alright, so we can move to, uh, item, uh, three point one and three point two, um, the overview of internal audit S Y two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-four. Um, so I want to recognize, uh, Miss Michelle Winston and the inter- as the internal audit director to give us an overview of the internal audits. Thank you, Miss Winston.
Thank you, um, Mister Chair. And again, I just want to express my excitement and, um, and show my appreciation of the wisdom in creating, um, this committee. Um, you know, I look forward to the work that will come from this committee. I, I will be keeping in touch. And, uh, so thank you for having me, um, tonight. Mia, is it possible that you can, oh, thank you. Yeah, thank you, because I don't know why I'm not able to pull up my presentation. Thank you so much. Uh, next slide, please. So by way of introduction, um, Prince George's County, um, Public Schools Internal Audit, I am, um, the Director. Um, there are twelve, um, FTEs, um, including a business analyst, um, within, um, the department. The department is currently fully staffed. Um, all staff are required to, uh, complete forty hours of continuing professional education annually, and they do. And most have, uh, advanced certifications, including, um, a certified fraud examiner, um, cert- CPA, as well as, um, certified, um, internal auditor. We're located in the, uh, trailer that is behind the, um, Sasa Biller, uh, trailer number five hundred. And this is our, uh, contact information also on this slide. Next slide, please. So, uh, govern- governance, uh, uh, we get our authority and the responsibilities, um, uh, as established by the Board of Education. And that is our re- reporting relationship as well. And this allows us to have the independence, which is any requirement of government auditing standard three point, uh, one eight. Or policy eighty-three seventy-three, um, gives some, uh, further, um, discussion on their government, governance, and also, uh, provides, uh, internal audit, the authority to have complete access to all PG CPS, uh, schools, records and personnel records. Um, and our authority to request, we also have authority to request assistance and receive full cooperation from appropriate, um, staff. And this is how we complete our work. Next slide, please. So our responsibilities, um, primarily are to conduct audits. And these are the types of audits that we conduct, uh, student activity fund audits, operational audits, investigations, and special requests. Um, now I'll also add that it, it's not exactly audits, but it's audit related. We also do, uh, continuing, what we call continue audit. Uh, what those, what continue audit engagements are, where we look at current data. Most audits are look back. Um, continuing audits are where we look at current data, and instead of doing a full audit, we just, uh, give, um, management our report on any anomalies or anything we might see through, um, data analytics. Um, we also, uh, have, uh, special audit requests from the state of Maryland, including the, uh, grade validity audit, which is an annual audit that's required to be completed by September. Our other responsibilities, uh, include, uh, we conduct, um, uh, the review of board members expenditures. Um, we assist with a selection of the external CPA firm. Uh, we are, uh, a part of the external audit activities. Sometimes we will assist with the external audit, but we also participate in the progress meetings, uh, hotline administration. Um, these are the calls that are, um, sent to us through, uh, Navex Global, which is an independent, uh, contractor. And then we also provide support to our ethics, uh, committee as it does, it does its work. Next slide, please. Oh, my. Okay. I don't know why, but I believe what was on that slide is, uh, to discuss how often we report. So at the end of every, uh, engagement, there is an audit report that is sent to, uh, the manager or principal, um, the CEO, uh, I'm sorry, the superintendent, as well as the full board. Uh, quarterly, uh, we also, um, do a quarterly report that summarizes all of our activities for the quarter. And then, uh, monthly, uh, we attend the, uh, Board's Executive, um, Session, um, which is a standing, um, agenda item to give them current updates. And then, uh, I'm not sure whether or not this committee might replace that, but we also, uh, report and attend the, um, OBAFA meetings, uh, monthly. Next slide, please. Oh, my gosh. Ah, okay. Oh. Oh, my God. I, I am so sorry. Uh, I don't know why that's not showing. Um, but our FY twenty-four accomplishments, I'm going to try to remember off the top of my head. I believe we have, uh, we have issued, I believe, approximately fifty audit reports, uh, so far, year to date. That includes operational audits, um, investigations, as well as student activity, um, fund audits. Uh, we have substantially completed our FY twenty-four, uh, audit plan. Seventy-five percent of our planned, um, uh, operational audits have been substantiated, substantially completed. That's fifteen out of twenty planned activities. Um, for staffing, we are fully staffed. Um, our most recent hires have been on a staff of three months or less. And then finally, um, just wanted to bring to your attention, um, that we are currently undergoing a peer review, peer review. And this is a require- requirement by government auditing standards in that, uh, audit teams, we have to also be audits, audited. So we have a team of auditors that are working for, um, other, uh, government entities. And they are currently, um, reviewing all of our audit work, our reports, uh, work papers, our processes. And they are looking at the period July one, two thousand and nineteen through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Uh, we are expecting, uh, a rating of pass, which is the highest rating given. And this is a, um, uh, again, that's a government auditing standard. Yeah. Ongoing business or action items. Uh, so currently, uh, we are preparing for the transition of the Internal Audit Director. As you all know, um, I am retiring, um, effective, uh, July one. Um, Janice Walter Simple, who is also in the meeting, is the Supervisor of Internal Audit, and she will be serving as, uh, the interim. Janice is, uh, very knowledgeable. She has been in the Internal Audit Department, I believe it's twelve years. And, uh, prior to that, she's spent a significant amount of time in external audit, I believe, uh, working for, uh, Bracilio Cobb and Associates. Uh, Janice is also a CPA, as well as a, uh, certified fraud examiner. So, um, uh, I, I believe that the department is left in very capable hands. So, uh, we are also, Janice and I will also be preparing the FY twenty-five audit plan before I depart. Uh, we've already started some preliminary discussions on, uh, what might be included in the plan in that, um, the operations risk analysis normally, um, forms our framework for, um, the discussion. So here are the current operational audits that are, um, occurring, uh, right now. H R certification audit of the, um, tool alignment, Skyline Technologies, and E J Ward Fuel, um, application, which is an I T audit. Okay. Next slide, please. And this slide just gives, uh, just lists the pertinent policies that are probably the policies that we most, uh, often, um, reference as part of the work, um, that we do within, uh, internal audit. And I believe that's the last slide. Yes. Thank you.
Righty. That was, you said that was the last slide, right?
Yes.
Excuse me. Yeah. Thank you for that, uh, Miss Winston. Um, so I wanted to, um, pause here and allow, um, the committee, um, and members of the board to, um, open up discussion if they have any questions. I want to recognize, uh, Vice Chair, I'm with the committee, uh, Doctor Zippor Miller.
Good evening. Thank you so much. Mine are more so like logistic questions to begin. I know that as we were going through the slides, that some of them didn't show. So just so that the public knows that the presentation is on board docs, so that they can access all of the slides that, um, that we went over today, so that they have all of the information. Um, and thank you again, Miss Winston. We definitely will miss you. And we appreciate, um, you getting us started with the Audit Committee. The one question I also wanted to just bring out, again, a logistics one is, you talked about, uh, on one of the slides, how often do we report? And you said at the end of every engagement, just so that the public can understand, can you define what at the end of each engagement is so that they know what we are referring to?
Okay. Sure. Thank you, Doctor Miller, for, for, for that question. So. When I fi- referring to an engagement, I am, um, referring to an audit. So we, um, do different types of audits. There are student activity fund audits. And those are the audits when we go to the school. Every school has their own bank account, and they keep, uh, their own set of books. So we, um, we, we conduct student, those audits. Um, we also conduct operational audits, and that is looking at an operational process. We might look at payroll. We might look at the purchasing process, um, what have you. And then finally, we have investigations. And so during the period of time that you are conducting that audit, that's what we are referring to as an engagement. Um, the time allotted for each, it, 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 it just depends on the nature of, of the audit. Uh, in elementary school, audit takes less time than a high school audit. So it, it, it varies, but as part of the planning process, uh, we do, uh, assign, um, hours and, um, expect the, um, staff to, um, uh, follow, um, those, um, hours. I hope I answered your question.
Yes, you did. Thank you. I just wanted, you know, while we may be familiar with it, I just wanted to make sure as the public, um, or what was watching that, that they were clear on what we meant when we said engagement. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you.
Um, I want to recognize, uh, board member Pamela Boozer Strutter.
Uh, thank you so much, Chair Jackson. I want to apologize. I have a weak connection, so if I'm interrupted, I'll come back. Um, hopefully everyone can hear me right now. Um. And, and if not, I will wait for my turn again.
Yes, I, I can hear you.
We can hear you fine.
Yeah. Okay, that's great. I'm getting all kinds of messages that you can. Um, so Doctor Zippor Miller just asked, my very first question is if you could expand upon the work in, in it, it within the confidentiality, and I think.
Hey Pam, we just lost you. We just lost Pam. Well, well, it's okay. We'll come back to her. I see, um, Chair Mc- McInnes Murray, um, has her hand up as well. Um, when Pam gets back on, uh, board member Boozer Strutter, excuse me, gets back on, we'll, we'll go back to her, but, um, uh, Chair McInnes Murray, did you want to, uh, say something?
Yes, I have a question, but first I want to thank Miss Winston, because we've had her very busy this week, because she's had to do several presentations. So I want you to know, we appreciate you and appreciate you sharing with everyone that has asked you to share. Uh, my question is, the O L A audit, I noticed that when you said the current audits, is that complete or is it still going on? That's, that's my question.
So, so thank you, um, for, for that question. Um, the O L A audit, um, is actually the compliance, um, compliance under, um, they, they are providing, doing the oversight of that audit. Uh, however, I have been in touch with them and, um, you know, just kind of keep tabs on where we are with the audit. Um, I know that they are substantially complete. We were expecting a report in May, but, um, from what I understand, that we're now bumping up into, um, other competing priorities with the O L A staff. So they're also working, you know, um, more audits for other entities.
Thank you so much. I just didn't want the public to be confused, because I know everybody knows that audit is going on. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Jackson.
Thank you. So, um, thank you for that, Chair Mc- McInnes Murray. Um, I see that, uh, board member Boozer Strutters, uh, is back on. I just want to go back to her to finish her, uh, questions and comments section.
Thank you so much. And again, I apologize for the weak signal. And, uh, Chair McInnes Murray just asked my second question, but I was following up on Doctor Zippor Miller's, where, where she began with, um, Director Winston about the, um, you know, the realities of this work within the confidentiality of how you can discuss it, um, that this is a significant, uh, portion of the board's work. Like I can, you know, I receive, you know, multiple audits, uh, in any given week, um, as a board member that I need to read and absorb, um, that the fraud, waste, and abuse line has multiple reports that, that, um, are, uh, kind of discovered among, you know, in the categories of substantiated, partially substantiated, not substantiated. And, um, I was hoping that maybe you can expand upon, more upon the board members, the, the significant amount of responsibility that we bring as board members to this work. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, you know, a- apps, absolutely. One thing I have always appreciated is being able to have a forum where I can have, uh, a, a dialogue and to meet and, uh, discuss, uh, with the board members monthly, um, the various, um, um, reports, um, that we, um, report on. It, 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 it really signifies the tone at the top, if you will. And, uh, it is, um, very, uh, significant, um, that the board, um, is interested in the internal audits. I, I know that there are several that you might get in a week, but, um, the fact that, um, the board wants to, um, exercise its oversight, uh, authority and, um, and a role in, uh, reviewing and ensuring that corrective action happens, I think it, it is key. It's, it, it's, it's crucial. And, uh, it, you know, and it circles down to the staff. Um, staff know, um, that you are looking, that you are, um, um, reading. And, uh, as far as the confidentiality is, is concerned, uh, it is important that, um, uh, especially personnel matters are not shared beyond, um, of the report. Those, and those reports are specifically marked, uh, con- confidential. And so, um, I, um, I, I appreciate that the board members have always, um, respected, um, um, that, um, marking on the reports.
Did she answer your question, um, Miss Boozer Strutters?
Yes, thank you so much. And, and I would like to also, uh, publicly thank you for your service and, uh, the six years that I've had the opportunity to work with you. You've been, um, exceptional, and this board has been very fortunate to have you as a partner in this oversight work. So thank you, Miss Winston.
You're very welcome. And thank you for your comments.
You. Um, so I had a, a few, um, questions on my, from, of my own. So I wanted to, um, ask, um, the first question I wanted to ask was in regard to, um, the scope of the audits. Um, how, how do you select? And I, I think that this is good for the board to know as well as the public. Um, how do you select the particular, um, focus, um, in the scope of the audits, um, that you conduct throughout the year? Um, I know you said you were talking about developing your audit plan for two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five, um, but I just wanted to get a peek inside of the process on how do you come up with those topics? You know, how, where do you direct your energy and focus? You know, how do you come up with that, um, plan?
Sure, sure. And thank you for, um, that question. It's, it's a great question. Uh, for the, uh, operational audits, um, we do conduct a risk assessment, an operations-wide risk assessment. And what that entails is, um, audit those, and then we speak to the managers. And we ask them specifically about their work, and we ask them, um, what is their risk? What is the risk of them not reading their goals, missions, uh, uh, goals or missions, or, um, just, uh, accomplishing their work altogether? Um, we, we take that, and then we assign a risk rating, um, to each one of those areas. And so therefore, that prioritizes, um, for us, what needs to be in the, uh, internal audit plan as, as far as operational audits. And then, uh, we also, um, get input, let's say, like, um, from, um, the hotline. We get quite a few hotlines with, uh, very complaints. And if we are hearing certain things repetitively, um, that is also a consideration for an area that we might also, um, uh, review. Um, I don't know, Janice, did you want to jump in here at all?
Yes, did you? Did you want me to speak on the schools or continue with operational?
Uh, did you have anything to add on the operations piece? Uh, but you could also, um, if not, just talk about how we select our schools.
Okay, well, in addition to the operational audits, we may get, um, you know, requests, or in the course of an audit, we may, it may trigger another risk. So some other. we may, it may trigger another risk, so some other weakness might be um brought to our attention or some area of concern. And then um we have a section in our operational audit work paper where we have items to be considered for future audits. We also incorporate that into our process for selecting schools, so um, once we would have done that, then that gives us another area where we can have a future audit. As far as the schools are concerned, um, we have a a distinct process um from the operational audits. And we have factors that we take into consideration, whether it's principal turnover, bookkeeper turnover, we also um we also focus on maybe loss of funds in a specific area. Um, the funds that are flowing through specific accounts, um, the the volume of funds that are flowing through accounts, we consider all of those as factors. And then uh we weigh those risk factors and based on um the schools that come to the top of our risk assessment, um, based on our risk factors, we select, we prioritize those. We also have schools, for example, our charter schools that require, um, the charter agreement requires that those audits are performed annually. So we try to get to those every year, so those are some other ones that come to the top. And there are others with special requests that we consider. And um those are other factors, if there's a special request, um, let's say there's an issue at a school and they, the concern is significant, um, there's possibly loss of funds there, or there's a probability for loss of funds, we'll prioritize that school. Um, and then we get requests from principals, IDs, and based on how recent their audits were considered, we'll determine whether we prioritize those. So that's basically how we select our schools.
You, um, just just a follow-up question, when it comes to um, the risk assessment, um, uh, Ms. Winston and uh Ms. Janice, one, is is that risk assessment um available uh for the board uh to review? Um, two, um, if so, as you develop the metrics for um the risk factors, like so, let's say if this particular area has weakened internal controls, then you, you know, um, give it a a a point one, and and this, another area may have like, you know, they already been like, something else is like flagrantly wrong, why don't you describe, get, assess them like a point five, like, so when you guys assign, you know, uh, values, like weighted values to these um different risk factors, um, when is the last time you guys developed, looked at that um risk assessment, like, so I I'm sure that it's not stagnant, does, do you guys look at the the risk factors every year? And um reassign values to those factors? Is it an ongoing thing, or is it something that's been um created many years ago and you guys are um, you know, sticking to like a a protocol that was established initially?
Oh, thank you, I'm sorry, Janice?
Okay, um, thanks for that, I can go ahead, for schools, we have um, that process is being reevaluated twice a year. So we do it at the beginning of the school year, and then we do it again in January. Um, and yes, we weigh those factors and depending on on how recent a school has been audited, depending on how the length um that that school has been audit, since the school has been audited, the length of time. If it's higher, we get, give it a higher rating, so we have, and we have a metric that's available.
So the metrics are um reevaluated every year?
Twice a year.
Twice a year, twice a year, and that's for the school and and operations?
Operations are done biannually.
Biannually, okay, and uh currently, right now, what is the biggest risk factor um or uh from an operational um standpoint, and and as well as a school standpoint?
Well, I would say mostly what we hear is uh staffing. Uh, we we hear that over and over again, that um they don't have sufficient staffing um for the work that needs um to to be um performed. Um, that's probably the the most repetitive um response, on Janice.
Yeah, uh, that's for the operational side. However, on the school side, you have situations where repeat findings, that might be a significant area, so schools that are not mitigating their um con- their conditions, where they're departing from required criteria, those are some of the significant ones. And turnover is another factor, because you know, there is constant turnover in principal and bookkeeper position, and that's another, another area. Um, years ago, missing funds was an issue, but as of recent, we have not had that situation um plaguing us.
Sure, and so um, just want to pause to make sure any of my other colleagues have any more questions before I ask another question. Um, but um, in regards to, after you uh make the risks, I mean, after you make your suggestions from the audit standpoint, you make recommendations, as far as like the follow-up and execution from those recommendations, how have we been tracking um the actual execution and performance um of the recommendations from the internal audit committee? Like, what does that process actually look like?
So from from a student activity fund, does, you know, we we have what, two hundred some school, we only have like five five auditors. Um, there's always a section in every audit report where we look at the prior audit report and report, report out on whether or not um they have um corrected prior audit findings. Um, however, um, this year, for the first time, and um um, thi- this will probably uh uh most likely continue as a continuous auditing um as I described earlier. What um what's done is, we looked at all of the schools that had been audited that year and um just um did it like a cross-section where we just went out to those schools and just followed up to see uh whether or not corrective action actually had happened to correct those. So that was, you know, done um like within a year, as opposed to you get waiting another three years before you um you audit. Uh, as for um our operational audit, as part of our audit plan, we include follow-up audits. And what follow-ups audits are, the same thing, these are audits that were conducted, um, there were findings, management always what we reported out, saying that they were going to uh correct those findings by a uh specific date. Um, we conduct a follow-up, just to see whether or not actually corrective action has um has happened. And um we include at least, I think about what, four to five follow-up uh operational audits in our audit plan, I think this past year. And I expect um probably will continue um next year.
Thank you, Ms. Winston.
You're welcome.
Right, are there any last last call for questions? Seeing as there are no more questions, we'll move to item four point O for any uh follow-up or next steps. Um, I know I wanted a question to ask was about the risk assessment, is that available um to to be seen, is that a public share document?
Uh, we we can share it uh publicly, we usually just keep it as an internal document, because it, you know, helps us inform our um audit plan, but you know, there's nothing confidential in it, there's no reason why we couldn't share it.
Or at least to the board, we would like the board to be able to see the uh risk assessment, I think that's that's where the angle was going.
Sure, sure, sure.
Okay, so maybe we can put that down here as a next step, um, to uh to get the um the risk assessment to the board, so we all can take a look at, you know, how we prioritize um, you know, our findings with inside of PGCPUs. Um, and with that being said, I think we can move to five point O uh to close the meeting out. Um, it's been a great meeting.
Excuse me, I think Ms. Simple had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see it.
I saw.
Oh, okay, um, I had, thank you, thank you, um, Chair Mcmickens Murray. I um, I had a question, um, since you're requesting the risk assessment, and we're in June, come July one, we're going to do another uh one to ten, we're going to do another risk assessment. A lot of the schools that were on top of the previous risk assessments have all res- assessment has already been audited. So would you like for us to provide you that document when we would have reassessed risk as of July one?
Well, and I'll let my uh colleagues weigh in as well, but I think that'll be great to see um the the picture now, and then July one, when you guys uh issue another document, we can see you know, the 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 distance on where we were and where we are now.
Okay.
I think that'll be good, but uh I'll I'll let my colleagues weigh in as well, what do they think?
I think that's good, since you're still standing up your committee to just give you that insight.
Yeah.
I'm just saying.
So as well. Okay, uh, last last call for questions before we uh close the meeting out. All right, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
We adjourn?
Second.
Again, the meeting has been um properly second, moved to second, um, we can adjourn the me- the meeting.